Mm-hmm, correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right. Right. Yeah.
Well, I think it's always a good idea for people to be able to donate milk or something. But that's the duty of trying to donate as far as you can. And I know that Charlotte has a... I don't even think they have a donation center. I think they have, uh, they just set it up at the campus. And maybe they'll need some change and, you know, keep them off the ballot when they're giving us stuff. But doing it out on the campus, I think, I think I'm going to get motivated by that. You gotta have something that's going to be creative because it's going to be another, you know, thing that I have. And because even when I've gone to Easy Nickel, you don't want to pink in the summer. I mean, so I think... I think it's a great, it's a great idea, but it's just filthy. And you know what? I'm glad they did because it comes with bugs. And I don't think that they belong in a grocery store. Let's just let it go back and recycle them. We do, everybody recycles them. And we're a border town, so half the people, at least, go to Illinois to buy anything without paying taxes. And then it goes and then it recycles them.
Are you ready? Are you ready? Good. Steven, you good? Okay. We will call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting. Can we please begin with roll call?
Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Connell.
Here.
Schummer.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
All right, uh, first item. Ms. Mickelson, you're up.
Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. Um, I'm here to talk about, uh, the services of information referral, our recent merger with the Associate Benevolent Society, um, where we're at in this merger and our process, and, um, what it means for the community as, for us being one agency instead of two separate. So, um, information referral, we've been around since 1979, um, providing services to the community. We started as pretty much just a referral, um, referral agency. We, we kind of branched out from the Council of Social Agencies. Um, as we progressed, you know, we, we noticed needs in the community. Um, we started helping with utilities, housing, things of that nature. Um, today, we, um, we provide all kinds of assistance, you know. We are a strict nonprofit, so we don't get any federal state money. Um, so we're United Way. We do a lot of fundraising. I write a lot of little grants throughout the year. Um, but it leaves us a lot of flexibility on how we're able to help in the community. So, um, just to break down, we, uh, we still do some utilities. We, we don't do as much as we used to, but we're focused on housing. Um, right now, we're housing a lot of people in hotels, uh, because of COVID. You know, there's non-congregate shelter, sheltering. So we are, um, to date, I think, since October, we've housed hundreds of people in, in the hotel. We work with Econo Lodge and the Travel Inn. Um, so that's one of our larger programs. Um, we do, uh, the med tree program, which is through Mercy One. Um, they do a fundraiser through the holiday season every year. All of that money comes to information referral, and we administer it through the year for people who have, uh, medication needs and cannot afford their prescriptions. Um, we're Pantries United. So, um, with COVID, there again, that we've changed that a little bit. Um, we had four food pantries. Uh, we have the Gateway Area Community Center, which is still a working food pantry, Salvation Army, which recently closed. So, uh, they are no longer, Community Action was one of our sites, but because of COVID and some things that were happening there, they closed their food pantry site. Um, and then the Benevolent Society. So we're down to two, um, just the Gateway Area Community Center and the Benevolent Society. Previous Benevolent Society, now Information Referral. Um, we do a Backpack Buddy program, which is a weekend food package program for kids who are identified by school teachers and counselors that would likely go without food over the weekend breaks without our help. Um, that is our largest program. Um, we serve about 180 kids every weekend throughout the duration of the school year. Um, so each one of our packages, we get, um, pre-packed from the Riverbend Food Bank for about 88 cents a pound, which equates to about $5 a bag per child for, for the duration of the school year. Um, we're fortunate to have Claussen's Trucking Company pick them up from Riverbend Food Bank for us. They store them at our, at their warehouse, and then I've got volunteers that pick those up and deliver to the schools every, um, every week. So, um, it's a very private program. The children are not identified. I don't know who they are. I just get numbers from the, the schools, and we make sure that the food gets there. Um, we do birth certificate retrieval and Iowa identification cards. Um, sounds like a funny thing, but without a birth certificate, you know, you can't get your kids enrolled in school. You don't qualify for food stamps. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the folks that we see move quickly and often, and so those are some of the things that they just, you know, they don't think about when they're going. Um, it's not a huge cost, but for some people, $15 is more than what they can afford. Um, so we do have a binder in our office that, um, has applications for every state and county. Um, and we're available there to help with the, the costs and also do the paperwork to get that documentation recovered. Um, there's probably more than that that I'm not thinking of, but, um, that's, that's pretty much the information referral side. Now, um, we've recently merged with Benevolent. I've been the director for both agencies, um, for about a year and a half, just a little over a year and a half. Um, we, uh, we're financially, legally merged April 1st. Um, so I've been kind of operating out of two locations. Uh, we just, just closed on the old Salvation Army building, which is at 219 First Avenue. Um, I'm moving my offices there as we speak. Um, so we hope to be under one roof by the end of this month. Um, so on the Benevolent side, that's been around for hun- over 100 years. Um, they, everything there is free, so people donate all kinds of things. Clothing, um, appliances, furniture, you know, just medical supplies, anything you could think of, um, people are dropping off. And everything that we get is free to the public. So anybody who has a need, they can come in once a month, take whatever they need out of the store. Um, we also have a food pantry at that location. Um, so previously, you know, people would go there with a referral from Information Referral. Not exactly sure how that's going to look now that we're under one roof. Um, we still will share, um, clients with the Gateway Area Community Center so that we're not taking on every, everybody in Clinton who has a need for food. Um, it probably won't be completely balanced because we do have a larger pantry, but, um, we will work with them and partner with them to make sure the needs get met and one place isn't strained. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
So will the, uh, Benevolent Society be moving in the building with you and eliminating that type of structure?
Correct. So, yep, that building is currently up for sale, the, the 100 South Second Street. So hopefully, like I said, by the end of this month, we'll have everything moved in from the store and the pantry into the new location as well. Yeah. We have a ton of room. Uh, and I should also say, um, we, they haven't signed the lease yet, but I think we will be renting some space to the Salvation Army as well. So they still will have some presence here in Clinton. Um, it was just a matter of, you know, they didn't need as much space as they had because their programs were kind of scaling down. Um, but I think they're going to be housing with us, and so they will still be providing some, um, some services to the community as well. So it's a win for everybody. Yeah.
So with all that room, are you, I'm assuming you're able to take a lot more donations now? Is that right?
Yeah, we should be able to take a lot more donations.
And they would contact who on that again?
Yeah, you can contact me, or, um, you can drop them off at the back door, or...
That's the radio side of me coming out, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, we take donations, um, we're there eight to four for donations. And, uh, yeah, we should have a lot more room in that space than what we've had. We're, we're pretty crowded where we are now, so it'll be great.
Were you leasing your thing, space?
Uh, where, my office, um, on, uh, we were at 415 South Third Street, and yes, we were renting that space, and then we owned the, the Benevolent Society building. Yep, and so, um, so, yeah, it'll, it'll be a good move. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much for inviting me.
Any other questions?
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to 2B, Crime Free Housing Update. We got, uh, Sasha Wade and Kristen, both here?
Was that the plan all along?
Famous last words, right?
Uh, good evening. My name is Joel Wade. I'm the Senior Sergeant for the Police Department and the Crime Free Housing Coordinator, uh, for our department. I'm assisted, uh, with the project with, by Corporal Mike Adney and Inspector Rich Foley from Building and Neighborhood Services. Uh, I just, uh, wanted to take a few moments to update the council on our Crime Free Housing Program, uh, and kind of give, uh, some statistics of where we're at at this point. Uh, over the three years, over three years ago, the Clinton Police Department began developing a crime-free housing program in response to the growing crime rate that was associated with rental property. Our goals were simple, keep illegal, illegal activity out of rental property to promote better quality of life for our citizens. Although the goal on face value seems simple, the logistics of accomplishing this goal were more difficult. However, after research and training, the program took shape. It was decided that over, uh, that our goals would be to have three phases to this process. Phase one would consist of training those individuals involved with the day-to-day operations of rental property. This group would consist of landlord, managers, maintenance personnel, et cetera. Training would consist of understanding lease and background processes, fair housing standards, crime trends, and utilizing the police department as a resource to gather critical information that would assist in managing the property. Phase two would be Security Assessment or SEPTED concepts, Security Prevention Through Environmental Design. In this phase, officers would assist in, uh, environmental and, uh, officers would assist in environment around, uh, and in the rental property. Things such as lighting, control, access points, uh, structure, uh, fortification, and landscaping that would hinder view around the property. Uh, the third and final phase would be community outreach for the tenants, explaining the Crime Free Housing Program and building positive community relations with the tenants, encouraging tenants to, uh, call if they believe that there is a criminal action taking place, no matter how small the event. Some statistics to, uh, show our progress to this point. To this point, we have, uh, presented three eight-hour, uh, Phase One trainings, which involve 29 attendees. Eleven partners from these 29 attendees joined the Crime Free Housing Program. Of the 11 partners, we adopted 71 properties. Of these 71 properties, there are 426 units. Putting this in perspective, there are approximately 4,500 registered rental units in the city of Clinton, and the Crime Free Housing Program works with at this time 10%. So, uh, how are we marking progress at this time? Some statistics for you at this time are, in 2019 and 2020, pre-surveys were sent to tenants of Cohart 1 and 2 before the properties were brought into the Crime Free Housing Program. In 2021, we did a post-survey for the same properties. We found that the percentage of tenants who reported that they, uh, felt somewhat safe or very safe in their apartments increased from 78 to 84%. We also saw that the slight increase of 74 to 78% of the tenants felt that they were very safe to somewhat safe in their neighborhoods. We had an, uh, had an increase of 73% to 86% of the tenants who reported that they now have deadbolts on their locks, which is a SEPTED concept. The number of tenants who reported that they never saw crime in their rental property increased from 50 to 68%. Then, uh, the number of tenants that stated that they never saw assaults increased from 73 to 81%.
Wow.
And, uh, those who stated that they did not see drug use or drug activity went from 50 to 57%. So a slight increase in just a short period of time. Additionally, patrol officers are also buying into the program. From January 1st to October 1st of 2021, they have flagged 80-plus calls for service that are potential violations of rental code, uh, in general. So what we mean by that is they will also, uh, look at violations, even though they are not part of the Crime Free Housing Program, but to reach out to those landlords to provide that information, to give them assistance that may be, uh, nice to have when they're managing their properties. So in closing, the Crime Free Housing wants to thank the council for their support and ask for your assistance to promote the program whenever feasible. This happens to be the last of the grant year. Um, after this point, it will be, uh, self-funded through the Police Department, and that's something that I'm sure the chief will be bringing up with the council. Um, I'd like to point out that we have, uh, another Crime Free Housing Phase One, uh, training, uh, October 27th, starting at 8 o'clock, uh, at the Clis- Clinton Police Department Training Center. Uh, if anyone is interested, they can contact the Police Department to register. Uh, we'll get you the information you need. Have any questions for me at all?
Is this going to be online anywhere so that we can share it?
It, it is. It's on our police website. Uh, it's on several other websites. I think Kristen was on her...
And the police Facebook page as well.
Yes.
That was a recent post.
Choose Clinton, Iowa? Yep. Okay, cool.
And I took the class, and I would encourage anybody, whether you own property or not, because I don't, but I thought it was a very good class.
Yeah, the numbers that I, that I gave you originally that, that stated that, uh, 29 took the class and only 11 sign up, that's because some of, a lot of them are bringing their maintenance personnel, their day-to-day operational individuals. So it only counts one as a, as the manager who has been part of the program, so.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any, any other comments or questions from council on?
It's an actual program, I'll tell you that.
Long time needed.
I used to be, uh, for all the time ago. Except that is also two.
Good, awesome. And it sounds like statistics are going in the right direction, so looking good? Uh, 2C, we have our City Engineer, Mr. Kraft.
I got you, Jason.
Oh, we should have let Zane go first.
That was the one you wanted?
I'll be quick. I don't know how to use that thing, but that's fine.
Uh, okay. Yeah, uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, Matt, Lisa, City Engineer, Jason Kraft. Uh, it's just a brief update. Uh, we've got the CIP coming up. So I just kind of wanted to give an update on the, uh, while I talked to Matt, and he, we agreed it'd be good if I gave an update to the council on pavement management program.
Grease the wheels, right? Just grease the wheels a little bit.
Because, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't make the choice by myself to come up here. But, uh, so the thing is, we, we, uh, we have had, uh, we've spent a lot of money on streets over the past, excuse me, like 15 years. And I would say, you know, a lot more than the previous 15 years, of course. And, and so we've done a lot of work, and, uh, but I'm not going to, because you all know how much work we, we've done. But I'm just going to go through this, uh, say, a brief summary there. Uh, so this is a, a chart that we, that we shared with you. I can't really see that all too well there, but in like 2015 or 14, this is where we, uh, we decided as, as a council, the council decided that we probably ought to fund the streets at about a $3 million level, uh, per year, just to get to an appropriate PCI. So, you know, before I go too much further, PCI is a, it's a quantitative measurement. Uh, it's, it's more objective than just to kind of look at, now, anybody can actually drive around and tell you what streets are bad. That's not very hard. Uh, but, so, but then it's like, it becomes almost someone's, uh, opinion, and which, which is good. But we also want to be able to quantitatively measure all these things so that we can get a little bit more intelligent about the money we spend, and not just on a whim, which sometimes we have to do anyway because of the, you know, nature of the complaints and the people that live on the streets and damage does to their vehicles. But PCI, it measures the roughness or smoothness of a street. Uh, these, these, uh, they have these instrumentations on these vans. You may have seen them. They drive around town on these, all the roads every four years. The DOT does this, measures the smoothness and/or roughness, uh, structural integrity, which is based on cracks, and then just has like some radar elements to it to see if there's a lot of voids under the street or, or how thin or thick the pavement is. And then it also factors in the age of the pavement. So what, it's in, in an algorithm, uh, that's, so it's kind of like not an exact science, but it's, it's, you know, it's close, and it's at least evaluated fairly across the board. Uh, and it's tried, uh, you know, across the state, they've agreed upon a, an algorithm that works. So PCI is zero to 100. Uh, and that's like, I would say, like, if you had a, a street with a 70, it'd be a good street. And it sounds like it's almost a failing grade, but it's a pretty good road if you have 70 or above. It's very hard to keep a road at that standard unless you maintain it. And what the, what the city and all cities used to do is kind of wait till it gets down to zero and then rebuild it. So we've, we've found with some of these strategies now, uh, we get, get to it a little earlier, that we, uh, we should be able to keep the roads, and we, we're shooting for 65 or above. 70 is a little, as you can see, or you will see, it takes a lot of money to even maintain a 65 with as many roads as we have. So this is what we gave to the, the council back in 14 or 15, and we, we, uh, decided that, you know, that where we wanted to be was upwards of 60, into 65 territory. So, uh, through the DTEM software, uh, that we've, we've played around with for quite a while now, it, it, we, uh, we landed on the answer was we need to, to fund this road program at $3 million a year. And when we did that, we also said that we would probably be able to taper it back a little bit afterwards, after this upfront spending. Of course, even before this, we were spending a lot. Because if you go to the next slide, you'll see that, uh, you know, back in 2007, when we first started driving these roads, or the DOT did, we had PCIs in the 30s. Uh, it's, it's terrible type of, of streets that we had then. And then, uh, we, we jumped up to 50 in 2013. And even after, as we've spent so much money, uh, it just takes a lot, because we have so many roads that we can, we still have to ignore some roads because they're not, you can't just fix every road at once. So even after we've spent all this money, we're still here in 2021. Now, that's like more of an estimation based on some of the projects we've done. The last true readings that we have were from 2000 and, uh, 2019, and they were, uh, just right around 60. So if you go to the next slide, it'll show, uh, so now if we just quit and, and sort of do nothing because we can't really, uh, maybe afford it, we would just, it wouldn't take very long, and we'd be all the way back down to where we started because it's just, it takes, it's like anything else. Well, maybe not like anything else, because a lot of things you can build to last forever with, with, like, just small amounts of maintenance, like a home or a bridge. But a road is, especially in Iowa, is susceptible to so much precipitation and, and extreme heat and, uh, frozen frost and stuff like that. So it, 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 they won't last forever unless you spend so much money that you could never afford to build more than one street a year. So that's the nature of streets. It's a continuous investment and/or, uh, the, the maintenance is just astronomical. So we can't quit. So this is kind of where we are now with, uh, I say estimated because those are 2019 PCIs. And I just, uh, everything that we've done in the last three years, I entered as a 95 just because I don't have any other information, but there, there's a note down on the bottom of the screen there. The DOT's drive it, has driven all those roads this year, with the exception of some of them that we're just reconstructing now. And so this is pretty much what it's, what it's going to look like, though. There's very few red, I should have put one in here from 2007 because it was just orange, it was like a bloodbath. It was orange and red.
What year did you start in?
Uh, 2005, I started working for the city. Yeah, well, I mean, the council, uh, agreed that it was a priority back then, and they still have, have kept doing that, so, and so, I mean, and we're just doing our job. But, uh, could do better, though. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, but what, kind of what we're looking for is yellow and green. I think blue is not sustainable. Some of that blue is going to go away when we look at the map next year. And, but I think we're going to have a lot of yellow, a lot of green. And we're, and this year, we're going to focus on getting rid of the red for sure. Um, and, uh, you know, the orange is where we want to be constructing, reconstruct, uh, see those values up there. Zero to 20 is red. Shouldn't really have a lot of those in town. That'd be kind of, I would expect a lot of complaints. Uh, the, the orange, 20 to 40, that's where, you know, it's, 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 it's going to get to where we need to resurface a road or do some high-level patching or reconstruction. Uh, yellow is 40 to 60. That should be most of our streets. That means we, we're maintaining them, and they're not bad, and then you can drive on them. Might be bumpy, but for a residential street, that's, that's good. And then 60 to 80 is, I think, a really good road. Mill Creek Parkway, it says 60 to 80, but I think it's kind of gone downhill here recently. But the, that's earlier in the meeting, we talked about patching that. And then the blue is, uh, that's like an excellent street, so, uh, we don't have that many. Uh, but, so, uh, yeah, anyway, that's estimated, and I think we're definitely above 60, so. Uh, but, so our, our construction program, I'm not going to go through all these roads, but this is the type of road, like, like 12 to 15 years ago, these roads that we were reconstructing and, and up until like even this year, were just riddled with potholes. And there was just like, we had to, uh, pretty much rebuild them from their mud, you know? So now, this is still a bad street. If you, it doesn't even look that bad, but if you drive up on 22nd Avenue North and, or any of these other roads in here, uh, the roads are not in good shape, so. 3.6 million is what we, uh, we have for next year. And the reason why that's a little bit more than three is, uh, we've had, uh, well, we've had some other projects that have, uh, some cost overruns and a backlog. We want to get rid of that backlog this year. And then if you go to the next slide, we'll have, uh, we'll have three years where we're not spending a whole lot, uh, kind of, uh, just catching some of the, some of the roads that are right now in the orange level and have, have not been addressed in the last 20 to 25 years. And that's going to be 2023, 2024, and if you keep flipping through, uh, 25. Oh, see, Springdale Drive is a big one there. I'd hoped to get the, uh, uh, right around like 2 million, but it's just like, that Springdale Drive is in bad shape, and it's frost, that's, that's bad, so. We're going to replace...
Frozen frost.
That's, yeah. Did I say that earlier?
Yeah.
From 13th Avenue up to, uh, 19th Avenue, that's a road that's really, it's going to have to be replaced.
That road's in trouble.
Can't maintain that road in its current condition. It's got to be re...
Can you just gravel it or something?
Are you being funny? So that one has to be reconstructed. So that's why that's a little bit more than, because I, I, I think I promised, uh, people last year we'd only like spend like 2 million. So if you go to the next year, uh, there finally got to a $2 million one there where that's just more like maintenance. I wish that every year would look like that. And then if you go to the last year, it's, it's 3 million in that one because we got 27th Avenue, which is, uh, it, it would be like, at, at that point, that's going to be the worst road in town, and it's a, like a narrow road. It's got, you got the soccer and the baseball there, and, uh, and some, some other traffic. So, uh, but who knows? Like, so if you go to the next slide then, I think when we get to 2026, we're going to find out, like, I don't expect this year, the numbers are probably going to be around 61 or 62. Well, that's, but what's not, what I didn't show in any of those, uh, maps or graphs or charts, was Manufacturing Drive, Bluff Boulevard, some of the known expenses there. Um, that's going to, that's going to shoot it up even more. So I think, uh, just, just a little educated guess there. By the time we get to 2026, we're going to be right around 65. And at that point, uh, just because of, uh, all the work we've done on DTEM's, the software that I, I've told you helps us analyze the streets, if you, because I've gone through every road, at that point, I can, I can honestly, for sure, say that we'll be at the point where we're maintaining, and we, I'm not, so, I said it's not an exact science, so it still seems like, when I plug the information into DTEM's, that we're still going to have to spend $3 million a year about to maintain the stuff. But I don't really think, I just don't really think that that's going to be the case, but it might be. So I, I won't say for sure what we project for years six through 10, but I, I hope, and, uh, worst case, it'll be $3 million a year, but it'll be, it should be less, and it's going to be a lot more of quick and easy, thin resurfacings, micro surfacings, uh, curb patching. We don't want to get to the point where we're back like in 2007 when we had all these terrible streets. But like I said, I think that if we can learn from our history, the thing was, we had good roads at one time before any of us maybe were noticing them, but we may have decided to neglect them, and they just, you have to put money into roads. Unfortunately, that's something that's just, uh, like I say, they sit on this, this, uh, dirt that's susceptible to all the elements, so. Is that it? I think that's the one, the last one. So, yeah. Um, just in closing, I would, I would like to, I can field any questions. You can look, I'm sure you've all read through this, and it's got the, uh, the, the five-year plan, and we, we're going to put this in the lighthouse. This is our, our plan, kind of, um, to fix the rest of the roads that are in pretty rough shape. And the funding, it looks like something around 3.6 this year. Scale it back to between 2 and 2.7, the reason for that. back to between 2 and 2.7. The reason for that, 2.7 was Springdale Drive, and then 3 million in 2026 for sure. And hopefully, be able to taper it back. But the cost of, the main thing is, the cost of construction is just, it's like 5 to 10% a year for road construction. The cost of rocks and cement and asphalt are just like everything else, you know, with fuel costs too. So I'm rambling now.
Jason, I noticed Lometawind Drive was on there for 500,000. And I think it was marked as a replacement, but technically, isn't that new construction?
New construction. So that was, that was supposed to be this year, Councilman Connell. But Mill Creek Parkway, it took sort of precedence with the patching that we were doing, we have to do on that road. And some fellow who is a citizen that came to the Manufacturing Drive public meeting, he said, hey, we're going to fix those because we had it for next year. But it made sense because we can't have that road closed down while we're doing Manufacturing Drive. So Lometawind got bumped back a year into the, but still in, because I think we voted last year to include Lometawind Drive in the pavement management program rather than fund it separately. So still in there, and it just swapped places with Mill Creek Parkway. But, so I should say that, of course, this can all be changed at budget time. If you take a look at these maps that I included in the report and the street listings, you know, and based on can we afford to do the, but I'm just telling you, these are the facts that if we do this, we'll get up to the strategic plan goal of 65 PCI.
Really hopeful for CIP, sorry.
No, that's all right.
As I say, we're really hopeful for CIP is why he actually went through the detail of listing all the roads out. So when folks show up, they can see their road, see where it is, and then be able to explain. Because then they could actually literally, if you go and take something from 2023 and take a look at the road and go, well, why is the one from 2022 ahead of it? And then you could actually drive out and see why. But just to be able to give them a sense of where it is and manage expectations as well. Because how long do you want to wait for your road to get fixed as you've been living on it for X number of years? So we're hoping that that'll help the CIP process as well, and when folks can see their, their roads are included.
Councilmember McCurns, go ahead.
So I've asked this before, and I know it's a tough question to answer, but are we ever going to get to the point that we can fix some of these really bad alleys in town? Because we've got some really bad ones.
Well, unfortunately, no, I can really, I can answer that very well. The alleys, we have some really bad ones. And we put them in the budget for the road use tax because, so that's, I mean, yes, the council can fund anything they want to fund. But we had the worst, and I've worked with the Public Works Director to get these, last year, we fixed a bunch of alleys. This year, we were planning on it. As you know, we've had a reduction in population, combined with a reduction in per capita funding from the state. So that is something that we're going to have to take a hard look at because I, it was road use tax, we don't want to be like, that's the thing that we probably have to cut versus like people and staff. And it's not my call, but like, the alley, the alley paving, I think that if, okay, so I think the council, if they want to set that as a priority and fund that out of a, it's not like that expensive. If we, you want to put like a couple hundred thousand dollars every year in there to fix some of the bad alleys, that's something we can do. But it's not part of the pavement management plan because the streets are a priority.
Yeah. And I don't think that an alley is a priority. However, it helps Brian when we get cars off the street for, you know, snowplow and leaf removal and stuff like that. And I think people always want to park in their garage when they can. But a lot of these people cannot get down their alleys in the winter time. So, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing some of the worst fixed every year, even if it's just two or three. And doesn't have to be the whole length of, you know, Fifth Avenue South. But some of them in there are good and some of them in there are not good. And even when the police have to go down the alleys at night, I don't know how, they must know which ones are bad because some of them are really bad.
Well, yeah, we fixed one over the high school a couple of years ago. And this last year, we fixed three or four either dead end gravel roads or alleys. And we, like I said, it's in the budget. But I have to meet with the finance and Public Works Director because we just can't, like, we don't want to overspend. But that is, we heard you last year, and we put it in the budget for road use tax. But it's got a, like, big reduction.
That's why they switched to SUVs.
Yeah, but that's.
Couldn't even get down our own alleys.
It's still tough getting down some of them.
Councilmember Musman, did you have something?
I was just wondering, in your five-year plan, did you, is that, the amount that you have for totals, is that taking account for inflation and cost of goods?
That is, yeah. That program, DTM's, it's that acronym. I was going to, I don't want to, I don't remember what it stands for, but.
Management system.
Could've just made it up. We wouldn't have known.
Yeah, no, maintenance systems, something.
Imagery.
But it's like, well, right now, it's an online interface, which is nice. You don't have to keep downloading software. So that, you plug all that in, all the today's costs, and then you plug in an inflation rate, which is, so that's, yeah, that's why as you, like that $3 million number, might do a lot in year one. But if you put in like year 20, it's not going to do a whole heck of a lot. Yeah. Yes.
Go ahead. Councilmember Shemmers?
Just real quick, and I didn't see it in there, maybe I missed it, but Mill Creek Parkway, and it's probably going to need to be resurfaced here in, what, five years, four years?
I think, well, we're going to fix all the bad spots this year. And then we, I had talked with the city administrator about the whole extending Mill Creek Parkway and resurfacing it in like six years and shoulders on that. I think that's in the CIP. I mean, it'll be coming back to you in a couple of days. I think that, that piece will.
So that 2 million would be vastly increased.
Eight million. Well, I mean, that'd be like a one-year thing.
Yeah, but it's going to be important for the timing of it with the discussions with Iowa DOT, with Highway 67.
So you know where I was going with that next part? Okay.
And so what we want to do is, it's sort of like the world I came from in the military. They take an old place in Germany, make it beautiful, and turn it back over to the Germans, right? So we're using that same philosophy, though, is that we can't, we can't just create a really crappy road to then turn over to them. We have to have that road up to stuff. It's probably going to have to be in the high 70s, the 80s area that do. And they're going to have to conversely do the same as we do the actual, if we move towards that, which we should in the future. But yeah, that's going to be very important because anything we spend on it will be added into the mixture as we look to do a swap of those roads.
And that won't be, like, say, in six years, that might be the only project we do that year out of the pavement management plan, is resurface all of Mill Creek Parkway. And we might have to add shoulders on it too. So it might just be $3 million. And that's, but, yeah, we also, as Matt said, we also got to extend it and talk about some of the intersections.
But then the next time, Iowa DOT does the whole thing.
Including snow weekends.
Yep. Yep. Or pays us.
So that, what we're talking about here is definitely be part of the CIP. And it's definitely going to be part of our 10-year idea that that's being all together. So then when we start looking at these pieces, and we start saying, well, maybe we need to put this piece to this year, or this piece to this year, we have that information right at hand.
That's spot on. So basically, what, if you just take a look at this and say, for reasons, you want to get to 3 million, you got to find 600,000. So you might go to Riverview Drive, which we don't, that's number one priority, actually. That's a bad example. But maybe, maybe you go to South 14th and 15th Avenue South, you grab 600,000. Now you got to push it to the next year, add the 5 to 10% increase of it, cost of, and shift that. And that's how those numbers will go. So we wanted to put real things in with dollars versus just, hey, let's just cut that in half. Well, you can. But now what you're going to cut is you have to take half those roads off that list, and now they shift, and then all, they bump all the roads that are on the next year, et cetera. So it gets more real when you start putting people's roads on there versus just a dollar figure. And we wanted to do that because every road is important to the person that's using it.
Another thing I would say is, yeah, if you go out and drive on any of those roads, you can see why they need work. They're, like, taking a picture of them, they almost look good.
Okay. Focus on the trees. Nice foliage.
So Jason, when you do one like 22nd Avenue North here, that is in the picture, are you going to do the expense of taking and putting the curbs in and everything? Or is it just going to be just like that?
No, on that one there, that, well, every case is different. But on that one, we're adding curbs. And a young man, Evan Tussel, works in the engineering department, so working on that right now, designing it.
Councilmember Sealy, did you have a comment? I know I interrupted you earlier.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
I think he interrupted first.
He did. He did. Councilmember McCurns was.
Hand raised.
She did.
Well, the one we like to use for example is, because we, I'm going to have Jason find out the year it's made. But when you drive up to go see the new Jurgensen Sports Complex, and you go by the baseball fields first, that road feels like you're in 1930. Because it's so small.
Similar to manufacturing.
Yes, exactly.
Time out there.
It might be 1920. Yeah.
That was the one, yeah, from 2000, I think 26, 27, 28.
What I would like to say is that I'm glad we're looking into the future for future planning and stuff, so we can plan for monies in the future and grants and stuff to help us move forward.
So we don't have any shortfalls. If you don't plan, someone plans for you, and you might not like it.
All right. Any other questions for Jason?
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. All right. More engineers. Zane, come on up. We should do it like Price is Right.
You win a free ride.
Can our cameras move that past?
All right. Hi, everybody. Zane Pennock, Assistant City Engineer. I know most of you. Haven't met you yet. Nice to meet you for the first time. I think I've been pushing this presentation off for about five months, but we've had a little bit of construction going on. So thanks for being patient. Last time I was up here, I talked about complete streets. I gave you kind of a brief overview. And then from there, you guys kind of sent me on my way to start working on some sort of little policy. So I've kind of started that. I'm going to start off, Matt, you can skip to the next slide there. So this isn't something that we came up with the engineering department. This is something that's being done elsewhere. So I'm going to read you a brief description and definition of complete streets. Complete Streets Approach integrates the needs of people in place in the planning, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of transportation networks. In doing so, streets become safer for people of all ages and abilities and better support overall public economic health. Complete Streets redefines what a transportation network looks like, which goals a transportation agency is going to meet, and how a community prioritizes its transportation spending. So the next slide highlights a few key parts to that, being needs of people in place, how we prioritize our funds, safer for people of all ages and abilities, and to better support public and economic health. So, and this comes from an organization called Smart Growth America and the National Complete Streets Coalition. So this is being done everywhere. It's not just us. And like I said, it's not a novel idea to us, and not a novel idea to the city either. These come from the 2032 Comprehensive Plan. A couple of excerpts there. Chapter one, chapter two, chapter three, and chapter nine, all mention complete streets in some capacity or in some involvement, similar to that definition that I just read you. So if you want to take a brief look at those, I'm not going to read them all off because there's a number of them on there. But I just wanted to point out that this isn't the first time that the city's thought about this. And it's kind of been in the works for a while. So that's why I'm in front of you today. The major thing that complete streets do is not only make the streets and the roads and sidewalks and the bike trails safer and more, more efficient for transportation, but they provide an update to the quality of life. And I think that's the major takeaway here is, you know, as we, you know, continue to promote our city and make things better and improve our roads, and we're building new subdivisions and new schools and all of these things, the quality of life is increasing. And I think we need to continue with that process by implementing a complete streets policy.
Just real quick, adding to that, we, we had a meeting the other day with Andy, a CRDC. And when site selectors are coming to our community to possibly bring a business here, they're looking at this exact type of thing when they're going around. So sorry to interrupt, but.
Good point. It's very interesting what you said about.
Yeah. And it's not, it's not moving the world to do this. A lot of these things, a lot of the ideas that come with complete streets can be done along with other reconstruction. You know, Fifth Avenue South is a good example. We re-stripped, we micro-surfaced that road, we re-stripped it, complete street, you know? Minimal dollars. It's not, you know, tearing up the earth. It's not blazing a trail alongside a road. There's a lot of little things that can be done. You know, the, I think the last, one of the last times I was up here, we decided on prioritization of bike trails in town, to say that, hey, these are the routes that we're really concerned with and we're really interested in. And just including those in with other portions of projects can make it a much more feasible project from a funding and budgetary standpoint. So the complete streets policy that was included in your packet that I forwarded along is just a draft. Like I said, it kind of came from recommendations from the National Complete Streets Coalition, and it addresses these 10 topics: vision, users and modes, project phases, exceptions, jurisdiction, design, context sensitivity, performance measures, project selection criteria, and implementation steps. All of those are defined in the report. I just wanted to give you, you guys, an idea of, you know, how it was broken down and what sort of areas we're looking at. The major thing, takeaway from this is that this is a lot of different, you know, criterias and a lot of different topics. But in each one, addresses a different portion of the policy and plan. And each one interacts with community staff and, or city staff in a different way. This isn't a policy that is just written by the engineering department or one person. This is going to take a lot of input from various stakeholders, be it department heads, community, or committees, or public members, you know? We need to get a lot of input from many different people. So I think, after reviewing the draft policy, the next step would be to forward this on to the various committees that you guys think would be necessary to provide input. And that's what I'm up here to ask for today, to be able to take this, the draft, to, you know, whichever committees we think are necessary, and start discussing the finer points of the plan to, you know, figure out what, what the policy looks like for our committees.
I'll make the motion to forward this on.
I'll second it.
Temporary policy or whatever the preliminary policy on.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we direct what committees it goes to? Or you guys got that down?
In the recommendation, I think it's starting the engineering department, then go to all committees, trails, and then traffic committee.
Okay.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood improvement.
Cool.
Let's send it to all of them.
But I mean, that kind of was the, the plan was to hit each one of the committees that had affected.
That'll be a lot of, a lot of citizen input at that point, too.
Yeah. I'm happy to talk with all of them. And, you know, each one has a different portion of the policy to look at. You know, it's not to say, you know, it doesn't make sense for the Trails Committee to look at something that the Neighborhood Committee should be looking at. So kind of breaking it up and dividing and conquering. But that way, everybody has their say on all, you know, each portion. And, you know, then from there, we can decide, take that input and say, okay, this is what we actually want our plan to look like.
Awesome.
So.
Is this something that you could take, once we get our draft policy, to our coalition that you sit on with the regional coalition, with Jason and you guys up in Dubuque?
Oh, like the RPA? Yeah. Do they?
I don't know if they give any input to that or not.
They do some. Jason, does RPA do trails? I think they do, don't they?
Yeah, it's not very well funded, but it's.
Okay. Yeah, there's a little bit of trail stuff there. So, yeah.
I'm going to throw it out there, and we can be flexible. But I'd like to see if we could shoot for like May timeframe to have a draft back. And it's kind of aggressive. But that way, we can get it to all the different groups and give them a timetable. Hey, here's your section. We need your input back. We can bring it back in the early spring to look because I don't know if we're necessarily any funding for this year. But I think that would be really good to have drafts. So in the summertime, we can plan for next year on what funding implications might be for that.
But this is also one of those things that we talk about, having plans on the shelf. So if we have this set and ready to go with a network and what we want, when those grant opportunities come up, we can throw this down and say, hey, we're ready and be one of the, instead of scrambling, we're ready to go. So.
I like it.
This was kind of the exact same discussion that we had at the Trails Committee meeting a week ago Monday about how this is going to be extremely vast. And the more vastness it has, the better off we're going to be able to.
Vast but connected.
But connected, yes, very much, yeah. It, yeah, I'm just listening. I mean, you know, we were down there with our Trails Committee, and we're saying all these same things. So I think everybody's kind of already on the same page. Now we got to start talking turkey, really.
Good. All right. Cool. We had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you.
Can we have roll call, please?
You're not able to hear as much as Jason. I appreciate you.
You have a lot more to talk about than I did.
Can we do a roll, please?
Mr. Member Robinson.
Thanks, guys.
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shemmers?
Yes.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
McCurns?
Yes.
Damn.
All right. Mr. Lemke.
Hey, do you want us on this side or that side?
On the other side.
Yeah. Do we have to pick a side?
Not on that side.
Mayor, Council, Matt and Lisa, Brian Lemke, Public Works. Round two of Counter Parking. Mayor, Council, Matt and Lisa, Brian Lemke, Public Works. Round two of, uh, calendar parking. So, instead of reading the dissertation to you in Boria, uh, on September twenty-second, I was on a phone call with the Neighborhood Improvement Committee and we, uh, came up with the possibility of, uh, how to change calendar parking. And what we came up with is basically two things. The extend the, uh, twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours after a snow event stops. And then, uh, for street sweeping, from October fifteenth to November first, calendar parking Monday through Friday for two weeks, and then on the back end in the spring, we do the same thing from April fifteenth to May first for, uh, street sweeping. Now, the leaves probably won't fall during that timeframe. And it's not gonna fall.
Or is it default? Bruce Jason.
It's not gonna fall in the spring. So, but we're gonna do our best. So, you know, you know, we talked about the three hundred and some plus lane miles and the snow that we have to remove, alright, so, uh, the trucks all like straight and straight and more straight. This is, uh, it's just easier for us and, and, and it creates havoc when we have to go around vehicles or stop in the middle of the street and back up and all that kind of stuff. And then with that, we, uh, the crew, we, we got their input on the different streets that we thought, this, this is just for added information. Then we came up with thirty-seven that the Traffic Study Commission, uh, with Jason, uh, is gonna take a look at for parking on one side of the street. So, it's something else that we need to look on, because what happens to our roads every time it snows? They get more and more narrow. Okay, so, and then the people, of course, parking farther and farther out, and then we can't get through. So, that's just the nature of the beast. So, when we get the straight routes and we start clearing off, the next thing we're gonna be hearing about is the snow's going on our sidewalks, so then we'll have to, you know, take care of that somehow. So, hopefully we can come up with a solution to that, so.
Can I add to that? I mean, I know for the, for your.
Piles and stuff, it gets narrower and narrower, but it, looking at the big picture, also, fire trucks have a much difficult time, the police cars. So, this, this, there is a domino effect here, the garbage trucks. I mean, it, it does affect the public safety aspect a lot.
City services in general, really, all cities.
I mean, it's a happy meeting. If we, if we, if we have a mild winter, you know, gravy. If, if we have a tough winter, which what's they're unfortunately predicting for this year, it, you know, it's gonna be extended because we could be done seventy-two hours and the snow is gonna fly again, so, uh, but, you know, this is something that we have to deal with.
So, Brian, do you feel that seventy-two hours is gonna give you guys what you need?
I, I think so. I mean, um, last year, we were basically getting through everything at least once in about a thirty-six hour timeframe. And so, you know, we're gonna get through, you know, we're gonna have a lot more information this year with miles and stuff that, you know, you figure at, at ten, twelve miles an hour is what we're supposed to be going. Over three hundred miles, and that's, that's straight again. It's not the obstacles. You know, it takes us about three and a half hours to make one pass through with, with seven snow piles. So, uh, yeah, I mean, if, we're definitely about to clean things up better, you know, the cars that are parked, you know, uh, now that we're going around, we're gonna go to clean those areas up much better and go to move it closer to the curb.
Okay. Alright.
The only question that I had with the, um, spring and fall, are we getting into any, what I would call, citywide events that may have a street sweeping issue? Like, if we're gonna, you know, the, the one that hit my head was October thirty-first, October thirtieth, when we're gonna have trick or treat, that kind of thing. Do we need to consider that? I don't think, I don't know, I don't think we do, but maybe, you know, just to look at that, you know, to see if there's any kind of citywide events potentially that might affect, you know, the street sweeping.
We can bring crews in early if it's gonna affect it. You know, there was some feedback, Bob Norwood gave me some good, uh, get some, get some, good ideas on holidays, they do it in the mornings, but it's not just a street sweeper that's out there. You have two or three trucks with it because you can only go so far and you gotta empty the darn thing. So, we can't do a whole lot of that without bringing everybody in. And then the dump's not open, so what are we gonna do with it at that point?
Right.
I mean, you got a big yard, right?
And a park right across it. Could you not coordinate something with the dump?
Yeah, we, we can, I haven't, I haven't talked to Brad at all about that. You know, that's something that, you know, that may work with us, but I haven't had any conversations with Brad at all on that.
I mean, that would just be on the street sweeping side of it anyway, and that's, you're normally doing that during the.
Yeah, we're doing the business day.
Yeah.
Some of that last week, yeah. And it's always better to, like, right after the rain, ambiscent, the trucks out because it's not as dusty and it picks up more stuff and it just works better.
Well, I certainly like, you know, after we had the discussion, you know, early, you know, a couple meetings ago and now this, I really like how this has played out. And I think you've gotten enough input from people, and I think, I think it's worth going forward, so I'll make that move, motion to go forward with this.
I'm sorry, but, you know, Friday's the fifteenth, so, we, surprise, I mean. So, you know, we're, we're still gonna do our thing, obviously, this week, this year, and, uh, as far as street sweeping, we can get as much as we can. I wouldn't, obviously, we can't hold them to that.
Yeah, and we have to read this through a couple times. It's an ordinance, so yeah, we're gonna have to read it several times and.
And it's gonna be.
Chances are people that come complain and.
Right.
You know, it's in support.
Yeah.
In support, I mean, you know.
In support.
If you do the math, you know, since we have twenty-five thousand people, cut half that in half, right, for adults. Twelve thousand five hundred people. If we get a thousand complaints, that's eight percent of the population. That's actually pretty good. We don't get anything near.
Right.
Eight thousand complaints.
We get eight.
We get plenty. But we're all, you know, we, we always wanna make it better, and that's the goal.
And the other part of this is gonna be communication, informing the people.
Right.
That's, that's gonna be the big key.
Yeah, I would like to see the seventy-two hour going to effect this year, even if we don't put the initial leaf part in till next year. But I would like to see the seventy-two hour reset this year. My street was a bad one and I got a really good street.
What is the?
Because the people didn't move.
Fifteen dollars was the fine, right?
Fifteen buckos.
Any other comments?
It's usually gonna be hard to make anybody happy.
So, I have a motion and a second.
You're gonna have people complain either way.
Yeah. Motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this? Cody, you're shaking your head.
We'll see how it goes. I'll roll with it, but it's your guys, not me.
On the right side or left side of the room?
You got a better solution?
Nope.
Now's the time to propose it. This is what it's for. It's a work session, right?
Yeah. Any other comments?
No.
I, I, I will say one thing. I, I struggle with the October fifteenth through November first for street sweeping because the leaves.
They're already starting to fall.
I think, I think if we're gonna do some kind of street sweeping thing, it's a little premature on those dates. That's, that's my thought, just because there's not gonna be enough down yet.
You know, I'll just throw it out. I thought it's, that should start November first then, when it started. Because you're not, there's, you're not gonna accomplish anything right now.
You're not even changing colors, yeah.
I mean, that, that's just my thought initially on the timeframe. I'm, I'm okay doing the, I think I'm okay giving it a shot and seeing if it works for the calendar parking, so the street sweeping can happen, but I think the timeline needs to be a little bit better. Um, is there, is there a reason why October fifteenth to November first? Was there?
No, I just picked the date.
Just picked it.
They're gonna start falling and, you know, you know, we could get Indian summer and they won't.
Yeah.
Come down.
Right.
Get snow in, uh, end of October and then it starts coming down.
True, true. Fair enough, fair enough. I, I don't know, that was my initial thought and, and I, you know, I'm a supporter of calendar parking, like we used to have it from, uh, November fifteenth till, was it March fifteenth? I, I, I support that because I think that really gives you the best bang for the buck, and I know it's inconvenient for some people to move their cars, but, um, it's also inconvenient to have snow all over the road as well. So, those are just my thoughts as we're going through this, but.
I don't agree with him on that one.
I think we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
And I, I think we can adjust as we go.
And, and that was the thing, too, is I, when I have a conversation with somebody is, until a better solution comes up.
Right.
I mean, we're all ears, obviously, if a better solution happens, but we do need to do something to help, you know.
So they can get their job done.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, street sweeping for leaves, you're not gonna pick the right date. I mean, you're not going to. And I totally agree with November, but you want, I mean.
Yeah, but we could have two feet of snow and.
Correct.
So, I mean, at one point, you know, did you say, hey, we'll, we'll visit it every week of the fall and we'll see what happens?
Yeah, we don't want the frozen frost on the leaves.
Right, exactly.
I mean, it's, I was told the day it's snowing in Montana now. Missoula, Montana is where one of the companies I work with is, and they're talking feet, not inches.
Oh, yeah. It's gonna be a bad.
I don't know how you win on that, I guess. Oh, man, you wanna give me that kind of power?
Here, here's a fundraiser.
You walk outside and you see a lot better than picking out in the future, like we're having.
Yeah, I guess I don't know how you would handle that, because I think something like that does need to be directed from you guys, so. And I don't think you just wanna pick dates out of the air every year.
No.
Maybe you do. I guess you could do that.
Well, he gets to pick Halloween and I think that's.
No, I get to pick trick or treat, not Halloween. That's the same every year.
Let's not give him too much power.
Tough crowd.
Lean towards the seventy-two hours.
I, I think the motion is to do the seventy-two hours.
Street sweeping, take off the plate for now, because it, it's a crapshoot no matter what. We know when it's snowing because it is actually snowing.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so, we're gonna, we will deal and adapt to whatever we have to do anyway.
Right.
So, but I think these steps, and we can always.
I, I think you're onto something better there. If you can adapt on the street sweeping, just by what the weather's doing versus having it set there, it gives you a little bit more flexibility.
Can we, can we include in the ordinance, uh, in the motion, I should say, that we will have a two-week period at the beginning of the year and a two-week period at the end of the year that will accommodate street sweeping that will also incorporate calendar parking? Not, well, maybe not beginning of the year, but in the season.
When you're gonna be in what part of town with the street sweeper? Do you break it out or?
No, we can, we, I mean, we can say, Monday and Tuesday, what I like to do is just follow the, uh, solid waste routes.
Oh, okay.
And so, then it gives us some direction.
Maybe instead of more laws and rules and ordinances, we could just say, hey, guess what? We're gonna be cleaning your street and could you guys just all, we'll all work together on this and maybe if you all park on this side and the next thing.
I was, I was kind of thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I am too.
It doesn't necessarily need to be in the ordinance specifically, because then you're held to that.
For the street sweeping.
For the street sweeping side, yeah, I think, I think you.
Like a public notice, say, hey, we're gonna do this area of town this week. Next week, we'll migrate.
The tough part's gonna be getting.
Getting the people the, the information.
No, but once we do it for a while, if you remain consistent, it might come.
But I think our media partners over there could help us with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your mic's on. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that Quad City Times.
Or maybe, maybe we need to, I don't know, maybe we need to get creative to evaluate the street sweeping plan. I don't know, maybe there needs to be something different.
I think that people like seeing the street sweeper.
Yeah, I agree.
I do. So, I think their cooperation might be easier to get.
And I like the, following the pickups of the garbage routes, because you know that that's your.
Can we, could we?
Well, you put out a notice.
Can we use, can we, yeah, we get the text message, like.
Say, and street sweeping will follow.
Right, but it'd be, it'd be staggered with their route, because all their garbage cans would be out. We did it the same.
Right, right.
So, like Mondays or Tuesdays, Mondays would be done, Tuesdays and so on.
Yeah, the day after your garbage is picked up, because then you get the, the garbage cans off the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because they have twenty-four hours.
Well, I was thinking recycle week is A week, B week. You know what I mean? So, if you coordinated it on the recycle weeks or something, like, hey, this is A week, it's recycle week, and we're gonna clean your streets, so please adhere to calendar parking.
Yeah, that'd be simple. A week, B week.
Yeah, you know what I mean? And then coordinate your routes based on the recycle weeks.
So, are we breaking this out then?
What I would suggest is, you know, do the seventy-two hours and in the ordinance, say that street sweeping will happen for a two-week period in the fall and a two-week period in the spring, based on.
That's enforced.
And that's when it'll be enforced and, you know, notice will be given, you know, you know, a week, because you, you could predict next week or the week after or the week after, but you can't predict October fifteenth or November first or November fifteenth, or I remember one year, the leaves didn't fall until the end of November and then it snowed on them. So, you don't know. But if we put it in the ordinance that way, not listing a particular date, but just say, hey, for a two-week period in the spring and a two-week period in the fall, this is gonna happen to be announced.
And that's not to say that you're not going to utilize the method that he was just talking about, of saying, hey, we're gonna be doing street sweeping, and then you send out that notice. We'd like you to please move your vehicles to the other side of the street. That's, to me, would be a great solution, but.
Yeah.
Not locking yourself into the date, I think, would be the best.
Yeah.
Sure.
We can use, we can use many different avenues to report it, but I, using that recycle week might, might help. Take out a billboard, yeah.
Is two weeks gonna be enough for you to remove?
We can get through the whole town in a couple of weeks, yeah.
Couple of weeks.
Okay.
Something happened to a street sweeper?
No, nothing big anyway.
Okay. Alright.
So, what is the motion?
So.
The motion is to, um,
Adopt the seventy-two hour.
Adopt the seventy-two hour, um, like the purpose, the purpose statement there, uh, on the top. You know, go twenty-four hours for the snow, stop to seventy-two hours, and then for street sweeping, go two weeks and instead of listing dates, go two weeks in spring, two weeks in fall.
Can we issue a warning before a ticket?
Yeah.
For what? If you make a mistake.
One for the whole season?
Kevin's shaking his head back there, yep.
Is that maybe how you already handled it?
I mean, typically, if they're asked to move and they move.
They usually.
Yeah.
Then it's all good.
Okay, alright, is.
Where does the revenue go from the tickets on this? Kevin or Brian?
Hopefully Brian.
You ought to offer, you ought to offer community service for it, then you can get some additional help.
Community service.
Yeah.
It goes into the general.
Alright, is there any other discussion on this? So, we're, we're, so we're clear on the motion, then? Lisa, do you have that? Yes? Alright, cool.
She's got all of us babbling for about ten minutes or twenty minutes on this, so she'll figure that out, right?
Any other discussion before we vote? Alright, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schumers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, updates. Councilmember Robinson, any updates?
No, nothing from me.
Councilmember Seeley.
Uh, Quanis Pancake Breakfast fundraiser this Sunday. In the morning. Early.
Where?
Eagle Point.
When is this?
This Sunday.
And I saw the advertising paper didn't have a location.
It didn't say the location. I hope I have the right location. I'll be there helping, I, um, yeah.
It's, uh, at the lodge. Well, did we rent the lodge, Matt?
I'm not sure.
Alright, well, I'd encourage everybody to, to come if you can. It's a good fundraising event, so.
Councilmember Connell? Um, on a more somber note, um, I'd just like to wish our, um, sympathies to the family of Cheryl McCullough. Uh, she was a long-term United Way Director here in Clinton County for, I think, thirty-plus years, just retired this past year, um, passed away this, this past weekend here, so our thoughts and prayers to her family. Uh, she benefited, uh, Clinton County United Way and many agencies, um, you know, Reagan was here earlier and, um, she'll be dearly missed, so.
Councilmember Schumers? A speechless. Councilmember Obrin?
Just one more thing, you know, uh, the thirty-six trees that we planted last weekend, we had so many volunteers, we did it in an hour and fifteen minutes. It was crazy. And wa, and watered. So, it was a, it was a great project.
Council, Councilmember Musman?
I don't have any.
Councilmember Kearns?
No, what I was looking for, I can't find that, so I'm good.
Alright, so, uh, a couple things. Uh, October twenty-fifth will be the Halloween Parade on its normal route. I think she said it was a little bit of a condensed route. It's not as long. I, I could be wrong, but October twenty-fifth, uh, the, the Halloween Parade, uh, October thirtieth, six to eight, is trick or treating. Another fundraiser, the Boob Ash, will be October twenty-ninth. That's the Rotary fundraiser. That's, uh, a, a big one for them. I think it's the only fundraiser they do. Uh, so that's good. A shout-out.